Good evening and welcome to the January 24th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item?
Next item is a flag salute which will be led by Councilmember Garpetian, followed by the invocation.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Let us join in prayer for our city as we seek and ask guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. As we witnessed once again, the peace will transfer power from one president to the next to the highest seat in our United States government. We pray for all who serve this great nation. We pray that our leaders who have the authority and influence to move this nation forward will do so and serve all of these United States and all of those who wish to become citizens of this great nation. We pray for their success in leading our nation towards peace, prosperity, and decency, which has been always the hallmark of America. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We ask that you look after our sons and daughters who serve in our military and ask that you bring them home safe from their various deployments. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
And what's next, please?
The agenda for the January 24, 2017, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, January 20th, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item?
Next, next item is a presentation and appointments at 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, January 31st, 2017.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of the City Council. Next week's meetings, there will be a joint City Council and Glendale Economic Development Corporation meeting in the afternoon starting at 3:00 PM with three items. The first is will be a report from Director of Community Development regarding the downtown Glendale Association's 2016-17 budget for the downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. The second and third will be reports from Economic Development regarding the Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District's annual work plan for calendar year 2017, as well as consideration of a resolution of intention to modify activities and not levy assessments within the Adams Square Business Improvement District. Moving on to the City Council meeting in the evening, under consent items, at 4D is a report from Community Services and Parks regarding a motion to approve the RFP Landscape Maintenance Agreement. At 4E is a report from Community Services and Parks regarding an award of a contract for the Duke Major and Barn. And at 4F is a report from the Chief of Police regarding the 2015 U.A.C. grant. And under action items, there's two. The City Attorney will provide a report on the just cause eviction ordinance as an introduction of that ordinance, as well as Director of Economic Development regarding establishing interim development standards and identifying procedures for ministerial approval of accessory dwelling units.
Okay. Heavy duty, huh, next week? Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please?
Next item is Mayor's commendation to Glendale Police Officers Jimmy Mercado, Matthew Stafford, and Christopher Clay.
And this is going to be quite an honor for all of us if I can have those three officers come forward. I'd just like to briefly give a summary of the reason that we are honoring you tonight. In the early morning hours of December 19th, Officers Clay, Mercado, and Stafford responded to a two-story house fire in the area of Dublin and Emerald Isle Drives. The officers witnessed the home sole occupant, Mrs. Kobanyan, on the balcony attempting to escape the blaze. Taking quick action, Officer Mercado climbed the side of the building, caught onto the flaming hot balcony railing where Mrs. Kobanyan was located. Officers Clay and Stafford worked on the ground to set up a neighbor's ladder and eventually were able to carry down Mrs. Kobanyan before running to safety. Thank you, officers, for saving a life that night. Can you identify yourselves, please?
Matthew Stafford, ma'am.
And I'm Officer Clay, and Officer Mercado was unable to join us today due to family reasons.
Okay, all right. Well, we're very proud of all of you officers going above and beyond the call of duty. Was it Officer Mercado that was injured grabbing the railing?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Would you like to say a few words about that evening?
I think you give a very good summary of it.
Okay, all right. Okay, it's quite heroic. So I will read one of the commendations, and then I would like to invite all the council members to go down to, to give these commendations to the officers. "In recognition of your outstanding heroic work and dedication in assisting members in our community, I commend your passion and your aspiration to go beyond the call of duty in order to protect the safety of our residents. I thank you for serving as a shining example to all, and on behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success, good health, and safety." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Shall we?
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you so much, sir.
Congratulations. This is great.
Thank you.
Good job.
Ma'am?
We'll grab the ladder.
Appreciate the kind of stuff.
I got a few waters. It was pretty hot. It looked like a big fire.
Thank you. And the next?
Three C is Mayor's commendation to Public Works employee Rod Torres.
Okay, and Mr. Torres, Rubik, do you want to give the, the incident occurrence, or shall I?
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely, you may.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I'm filled with a tremendous sense of honor as I introduce to you Rod Torres, our senior maintenance wastewater maintenance worker, who I have recently knighted as superhero. As, as the story goes, in the morning of December 14th, Rod Torres and a couple of his colleagues were helping out some of my engineers with some fieldwork around the train tracks at Chevy Chase Drive, and they see an old lady walking, starting to walk very slowly.
Careful.
Much older lady, starting to walk very.
That just made it worse. Thank you, Rubik.
As the story goes, walking very slowly across the tracks, the train tracks, and they tried, the guys tried to get her attention and keep telling her that she needs to walk faster because there could be a train coming any minute. However, she keeps at her own slow pace. Either she couldn't hear them or wasn't paying attention. A little later, they hear a train coming in the distance, and the guys start moving their arms, yelling, literally yelling at her that she really needs to move fast because there is a train approaching. But again, she keeps at her own slow pace. At this point, the train is dangerously close to the intersection, and Rod, without hesitation, without thinking about it twice, runs across the tracks, picks her up, moves her out of the train, path of train as the train speeding by honking its horn. Needless to say, Rod's quick action, his heroic act, quick thinking, saved that lady's life and prevented a major accident that day. What's amazing, too, when he went back to the yard, to his shop, he didn't tell anyone about it. His supervisor didn't even know. And it so happened, they had their Christmas luncheon that day, and I was attending. One of the guys who had witnessed the whole thing told it to me casually, and I went up to Rod to thank him for his action. He acted like, oh, it's no big deal, it's part of my job. And Madam Mayor, that just goes to prove his strength of character, his humility, and that he didn't do this for the recognition. But on behalf of the men and women of the Public Works Department, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for the commendation. And with that, it's my great pleasure to introduce to you Rod Torres.
I'd just like to thank the mayor and City Council for this commendation. And yeah, I guess it could have been ugly, I didn't really think about it, but she wasn't really able to move. She was walking very, very slow, a little walker. And there's two other coworkers, colleagues, who helped me out, Roy Rodriguez and Rick Beltran, who aren't here tonight, but they also helped out. I'd like to thank Rubik for the recognition and my Maintenance Services Assistant Director, Dan Hargrove, and also my superintendent, John Hicks. So thank you very much.
Well, go ahead. Forget. Oh.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I'd like to introduce my lovely wife, Lisa, first council meeting. Yeah, I'll hear her later.
Well, you're certainly a fine example of the wonderful employees that we have in our city. What you did was truly heroic. I don't know why, Rubik, you don't have a Superman shirt for him, you know, with the big S, but thank you so much. I know that she must be extremely grateful to you, and we're proud of you and so happy that you're with the Glendale family. I'll read your, do any of my fellow councilmen want to say anything to Mr. Torres, Mr. Johnson?
I have a question. Was it a MetroLink, UP, or Amtrak?
It was a MetroLink.
Okay, you got some hardware coming from MetroLink.
Oh, thank you.
We'll take care of that. We didn't know about that, and it's really something.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, there are incidents that occur weekly on the lines, and not all of them are suicides. A lot of them are just accidents, and we do appreciate, appreciate your hard work. And an accident like that closes down the line for several hours, aside from the trauma to the families and to, to the other riders. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you.
I'll read the commendation in recognition for your outstanding heroic work and dedication to assisting members of our community. "I commend your passion and aspiration to go beyond the call of duty in order to protect the safety of our residents. I thank you for serving as a shiny example to all. On behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success."
Thank you.
And. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You almost blew it, you know. You know how close you came to, by not introducing your wife? All this superhero stuff, you would have been hearing it if you got home, so. Thanks to the city manager for picking that.
That's a good suggestion.
We'll have something for you, too, Mr. Johnson, next week.
Okay, next item, Mr. Psaki?
Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Consent items including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed. Madam Mayor, we have a request to pull item 4E.
4E, exactly. Anyone else? Councilman Najarian?
Yes, I'd like to pull 4F.
4F. Okay, do I have a motion to move the rest of the consent items?
So moved.
Second?
And roll call, please?
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Can you read into the minutes, please? Item 4E.
Item E is Director of Public Works regarding fiscal year 2016-17, Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Curb Ramp Installation and pavement repair program, and miscellaneous work at various locations in connection with Spec. 3594. E1 is a resolution adopting the plans and spec and directing city clerk to advertise for bids.
Okay, I have one card on this one. Sherry Stubbs?
Oh.
I'm sorry, what?
Stubbs loose.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Two minutes.
You've all heard my comments before at previous council meetings, and so you know that we are in total support of the project. This is the entry markers on Put Hill Boulevard in North Far North Glendale, at Pennsylvania, and at Lowell.
Is that the correct one?
Is this for the ADA curb?
Madam Mayor, yes.
It is 4E.
A part of project includes the installation of.
Okay, great. Sorry. That's what Jackie said.
So anyway, we are in total support of it, as you know. It's in conjunction with our North Glendale Community Plan, and will be a welcome and beautiful addition to not only the Boulevard, but the whole community in Far North Glendale. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stubbs. Do I have a motion for this item?
I'll move item 4E.
Roll call?
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes, and we please item 4F.
4F is Fire Chief regarding disposition of two Pierce Aero fire engines. F1 is a resolution authorizing donation to the Republic of Armenia.
And.
Thank you. I'm not sure if there's any cards on this.
No, I don't.
Chief, not necessarily about you, but I, I raised this item just to make some comments on it. I wanted to scold my colleague, Mr. Garpetian, for not including his buddies on the partner, on the dais, as well as the mayor.
Thank you.
In advertising the donation of these two fire engines to the Republic of Armenia on social media. I got many calls from people who said, well, how come Mr. Garpetian is the only one who's with the fire chief taking pictures, with the city manager taking pictures? So I will give him the benefit of the doubt. As a younger council member, please include as many of your council members as you can, especially when you're talking about an item that hasn't yet even been voted on by the council today, is the actual action that we're taking. I'm very happy that you were the initiator of this. There is no doubt about that, but please include your, your colleagues. There's no I in team.
Well, if I may, Madam Mayor, I was contacted by several social media news entities and gave interviews, and if you read them, I mentioned, and I made sure they put it in there, that every council member on this dais voted for it. I had posted one post on the social, my own social media, that I said, I made a motion. I did not say, I made this happen. I did not say, I donated this, these trucks. I know this is a team. I never went around that, that issue or idea, but if I offended you, I apologize, Mr. Najarian. But every interview I gave, first thing I said, this was a teamwork, this was done by the dais, all the members of the city council, the management, as well as the fire department. So again, I know there is no I in team, but never, never intended that way. And I expect your, your donation on, on cost of transporting the items, this fire trucks to Republic of Armenia as well, because we have to raise money for it as well.
A short comment from me. I want to commend Councilmember Garpetian for moving this item. Obviously, no vote has been taken on it.
That's right.
It's about to be taken, and yeah, it's, you know, a little surprising when photos being taken with former police chiefs and other officials, and we're not informed about it. But in any case, I think, again, this is all about cooperative spirit. Hopefully, we, you know, I guess the vote will show how we vote, and we'll have to worry about how to, how to get those trucks to the, to the destination point.
And I was contacted the, the fire chief of the City of Yerevan to set up a meeting with the management, and that's what I did. And I'm sure every one of you do the same things with different, different organizations that come to, to, that approach you to, to set up a meeting. But again, we all know this is a teamwork, and I never said, I did all of this, and if the message was conveyed that way to you, I apologize, Mr. Najarian, so no hard feelings.
Do I have a motion on the item?
We have a gentleman wants to make a motion, so.
I'll move the item. I'll move the item.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Roll call, please?
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes.
And of course, thanks to Chief Fish for working out the details with Mr. Garpetian, and I can assure you that this equipment is very much appreciated in Armenia and perhaps.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know we voted on it already, but does the, does the truck, is it sort of bare bones, or does it come with the old hoses and the old poles and all that, and all the equipment that goes along with it?
It will come with, it's not going to be bare bones. It will have some complement of equipment, yes. It'll have hose and nozzles, and it's in operating condition. It's just not to the level of service that we would expect in Glendale.
Sure, that's another thing, right? Our, our equipment is very well maintained, and it's usually in great condition. It's just that standards change, and therefore, we have to get new trucks, so.
And couldn't think of a better way to, to make use of the trucks, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
And thank you to council for passing that resolution. Next item, please?
Next item on the agenda, City Council and staff comments.
I'm going to begin tonight. The City of Glendale lost a dear soul this past week. Tonight, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of longtime Glendale resident Byron Peoples, who passed away last Monday. Born in Granum, Alberta, Canada, in 1931, Byron attended both UC Santa Barbara and USC, earning a bachelor's and a master's degree in the musical arts. He began his lifelong career in Los Angeles in the Philharmonic Trombone Section from 1963 until his retirement in 1999. Even after his retirement, Byron stayed active in the community. He was a longtime member of the Glendale Philharmonic Committee and was often seen driving the committee's van of musical instruments to Glendale and La Cressenta third grade classes for musical demonstrations. In his personal life, Byron loved Glendale and said often about how blessed he felt to live in such a beautiful community. Neighbors could hear him practice his trombone daily in his music room, looking at the beautiful hills behind Bran Park. Although his music has now stopped, the beautiful music he created and his contributions to this community will live on. So I, I request that we adjourn the meeting in memory of Byron Peoples, a lovely gentleman. Lovely gentleman. Now, I'd like to ask my council members, my colleagues, I would like a second from you to ask staff to bring back for discussion a report concerning public open space requirements when used to obtain additional density or incentives. Based on a project that we recently reviewed, in which an 11-foot-wide side yard was included in the public open space calculations, I believe that the current requirements should be revised to state that no portion of an open, of an area that is used to provide a public open space incentive shall have a dimension of less than 20 feet. We are currently circumventing the interest, or the intent, I'm sorry, of this ordinance, and so I think we have useless, narrow, open space to be counted for a requirement for this incentive. So I'd like to have a second.
I mean, I have no predisposition towards what it should say, but, but I certainly want to see a report, and I do agree that the intent was to provide meaningful open space.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Sinanian. My second request of my colleagues is that I would like to ask you to, to bring back a report from staff on the, a discussion concerning establishing a shuttle or some sort of trolley in, on Bran Boulevard or Central, a feasibility study on cost, timing, implementation, and logistics. Today, we received a report concerning tech industry and, and the future of Glendale. And one of the, the weaknesses was our transportation in the city. And a suggestion that they made was one that I have been asking for since I was first elected, what, gee, it's almost two, three years ago, for a, some sort of a shuttle on Bran Boulevard, which goes all the way up perhaps to Mountain and comes back around on Central. So I'd like for, to ask my colleagues to second a, a staff report to come back for the, the feasibility of such a, an addition to our downtown.
I'll second that, since I made the same motion this afternoon at 3 o'clock, so I'll second that.
And you're referring to a rubber-wheeled as opposed to a fixed rail?
Correct, correct, correct. And as far as I understand, and I don't want to get into a discussion, Mr. Garcia, but we do have vehicles available that we might be looking at to kind of paint and, and make them, you know, really kind of fun for the community, for those who want to ride. So I, I think a study would be helpful in that, that aspect, so thank you. So I look forward to that. We started this evening, I have a few more comments, I'm sorry, but I want to do this because I think it's really important. We had, I gave commendations tonight to, to four staff members, Police Department and Public Works, but I wanted to share some of the emails and comments that I received over the holidays, because a lot of times, our employees and staff do not receive the acknowledgement that they need. First of all, I want to give kudos out to GWP, Public Works, the police, fire, all of you who worked 24/7 in the last few days during the torrential rains that we just had. I know that you, you had staff out there working on fallen trees and mudslides and all sorts of catastrophes going on in the city, a loss of power, and yet, the city kept going. These problems were all solved. I happened to be driving, in my neighborhood, there was a tree down, and I stopped. It was like 10 o'clock at night, and the guys were working on getting this tree off of, you know, the, I think it was the telephone poles or the wires, and they were, you know, they didn't have a clue who I was, and they were so very nice and explained what was going on, and, and just so pleasant, dripping, you know, the rain was coming down, and, and they were just great. I also received an email concerning the Glendale Police Department, and this one says, "I want to let, Mayor Devine, I want to let you know of the wonderful job the Glendale Police Department did last night regarding a suspicious man in the street. The officers responded quickly, they were professional, efficient, and friendly. We truly appreciate the men and women of the GPD. God bless and protect them and all law enforcement personnel." That was for them. Then I received another card, and it was from a gentleman that I had met at an event over the holidays, and he happened to be a filmmaker, and he was in Glendale for six days working with our staff on a film. And he wrote to me and said that he was so happy to be working in Glendale because there were agreeable, they were quite agreeable, all the staff that he worked with, and there were little to zero problems on the, on the shoot. He said, unlike other cities in LA that he had worked with. So compliments to all those that work on our, our films and, and TV productions, et cetera, that go on. And the last one, and I'll stop here, is a compliment that I just received for, again, Public Works and parks and, and libraries, and that's the lovely addition of lights in Bran Park. And the, the person that wrote the email said how wonderful it is to walk in the park now with the lights, and that she feels safer, that the safe factor has just, just gone through the roof, and she's very grateful, and so I, I thank you as well. And these are just, you know, we hear, there are a lot of glitches that happen every day in, in the service that, that goes out to the community, and our staff is working so hard to make sure that everything runs smoothly and seamlessly. And I just want to share these emails and letters that I get to let all of you know, staff, employees, the City of Glendale, let you know that you are appreciated out there, and people are noticing, and they're writing to all of us about the good work that you're doing. And so with that, I think I'm finished for now. So if anyone else would like to make a comment, Councilmember Sinanian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So piggybacking on you, since you raised the issue of the tech, tech report which we received today, I did want to, since it was in the afternoon session, I did want to bring to residents, our guests' attendance, attention to the fact that the tech strategy report was submitted today, and I found it to be a very fruitful and very.
with the lights, and that she feels safer, that the safe factor has just gone through the roof, and she's very grateful, and so I thank you as well. And these are just, you know, we hear, there are a lot of glitches that happen every day in the service that goes out to the community, and our staff is working so hard to make sure that everything runs smoothly and seamlessly. And I just want to share these emails and letters that I get to let all of you know, staff, employees, the city of Glendale, let you know that you are appreciated out there, and people are noticing, and they're writing to all of us about the good work that you're doing. And so with that, I think I'm finished for now. So if anyone else would like to make a comment, Councilmember Sinanian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So piggybacking on you, since you raised the issue of the tech report which we received today, I did want to, since it was in the afternoon session, I did want to bring to residents and our guests' attendance, attention to the fact that the tech strategy report was submitted today, and I found it to be a very fruitful and very thoughtful analysis of where we are and what are the directions that we should, we could possibly move towards. I want to thank all of my colleagues, Mayor Devine and Councilmembers Garpetyan and Najarian, for the support of, you know, the concept of Glendale, being involved in the tech industry and continuing to have a leading role in it. And since the future, sort of the action plan involves a piecemeal set of steps that council will be taking and staff will be bringing to us, I wanted to sort of nibble at one issue and hopefully get support for a second, for a report from council as to the establishment of Wi-Fi in downtown Glendale. I think we're, we have to have Wi-Fi in downtown Glendale, and also Wi-Fi at the bus stations. Recently, we've been getting some criticism about the bus stations, some people are unhappy about it, about the shelters, about the way they protect people waiting for the bus, and also, you know, sometimes people have to wait for a long time. I think having Wi-Fi at the shelters would really be helpful. It would be good, people could spend their time there in a productive way. So if I can have a second on that, that'd be...
I'll second that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have something.
Councilmember Garpetyan?
Yeah, thank you. I want to bring to the attention of the City Manager, as well as Public Works Director, Mr. Gulanian, to look into the crosswalk on Locarcenta Avenue and Piedmont. This is really a wide street, it's close to Honolulu. At night, there is no light, it's very dangerous, people cross the street, and very hard to see, its visibility is very low. One side, going north, there is a street light, which is kind of dimmed, and it's like a fog light, it's a yellow color, and it's not, it's not very visible. I'd like to have that crosswalk maybe evaluated and see if you need to put flashing lights or not. And as far as the flashing lights go, the one on Colorado, between Chevy Chase and Virago, between all of the flashing lights that we have, that one, to me, as a driver, is the best because it catches your attention. The sign itself has flashing lights, as well as around, like a traffic light, but it's just a single light that flashes all the time when they press the button, so there are two lights that catches your attention. And the signs are two-sided, it's not only one-sided. So if you're on the middle lane, you can still see the sign across the street on the opposite side. Also, the landscaping in Montrose on Honolulu, I want to make sure that we pay a little bit more attention to it, and I want to thank you for, you know, including that grass in there, it looks really good at the memorial, but landscaping needs a little bit more attention on Honolulu and Montrose. And finally, speaking of, we were talking about techs and tech companies and how we want to attract more companies to Glendale, I think we need to have a game plan as to how can we attract more companies to bring manufacturing jobs to Glendale as well. I think it's a must. Manufacturing is the, was the backbone of this country, went from 33% to 8%, and hopefully it's coming back, but we need to work on it to maybe grab one or two big companies to come to Glendale. So I would like to see how can we start that process as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is a community event announcements portion. This is reserved for three-minute community event announcements. I do not believe there were any cards submitted, and there's also a portion for three minutes oral communications for people wishing to speak now, instead of for five minutes at the conclusion of all city business.
And I have one card. Jared Degonia, is that correct, from Supervisor Barger's office?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I filled out the wrong card, I was supposed to fill out the public comment card, but I've been called up. I want to introduce myself. My name is Jared Degonia, I'm a senior field deputy on behalf of Supervisor Catherine Barger, and I have the pleasure and the privilege of representing her with the city of Glendale. So I'll be her field deputy, working with the council and your staff on matters impacting the city of Glendale and the county of Los Angeles, and I'm looking forward to representing the city on behalf of the supervisor, representing the supervisor to you, and working with all of you on issues that are mutually beneficial to your constituents and the supervisor's constituents. And it was important for me to be here tonight to introduce myself and say hello. I'll leave my business card with staff so that you may have my contact information, and I'm not unfamiliar with issues facing the city of Glendale. I've worked with Councilmember Najarian on the Stanford Denny Valley Council of Government, so I'm very familiar with a lot of the transportation issues, and I'm looking forward to get to know the city much better as well. So it's my pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garpetyan, did you have a comment?
Yes, one other item I wanted to...
Oh, okay.
One other item that I wanted to add was SCAG has a program, it's called Go Human. It's a transportation, it's bicycle program, that they have training classes and safety classes for children, as well as adults, and I want to see, when Siklavia comes to Glendale, I think that's the best time to incorporate that in there, and they raised about $12 million for this year's program. So I want to see if we can apply for, submit an application to bring it to Glendale.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, next item.
Next item on the agenda is action items. Eight A is Director of Public Works regarding contract for designing construction services for a beeline maintenance facility project. Eighty-one, resolution rejecting all bids, dispensing with competitive bidding, and authorizing the Director of Public Works or his designee to directly negotiate with one or both firms that submitted bids.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, ma'am. This is an item that actually has been a little bit of a long time coming. We've been carrying as one of our department's strategic goals, the preparation of the documents necessary to get to this point for the beeline maintenance facility, and indeed, so much hinges upon our strategy for local transit by way of having our own transit facility, our own maintenance facility, as it were. What we have, though, at the same time, is the reality that the economy has, especially regionally, has improved. We're seeing construction throughout the Los Angeles basin providing much less competitive bids for cities like Glendale and other employers, and so with respect to this particular project, we have a situation where we pre-qualify for different companies to bid on this project. As a design bill, two of them, as opposed to four of them, submitted the bids to us, one of which we felt was non-responsive based on some of the requirements contained in the bid documents and bid process, and the other was well above what our engineer's estimate was, which by the way, was crafted not only by staff, but by an outside consultant as well. Of course, that said, the lowest bid was still about $1.1 million above our $3.7, $3.8 million estimate. So at this point, what we are requesting from you is to reject all of the bids, direct the Public Works Director to negotiate with one or both of the two bidders that we have, and then come back to you, hopefully come back to you in a period of weeks, with the opportunity to award a bid for this project. This period of time allows us to, in good faith, negotiate, and if necessary, value engineer to be able to bring this project in at the pricing that we can afford. So with that, if you have any specific questions about the project, certainly, Mr. Gulanian can answer those, but what we are asking today is not to approve a contract, but rather to give us the time to negotiate with the two parties and come back to you with a contract for this project.
Councilmember Sinanian?
And the point of the negotiation, sort of the separate negotiation, is to bring down the bid amount?
Yes.
But how would that happen? Would we have to give something up?
Not necessarily. I think that the bidders included items, you'll find, especially in an environment where work is plentiful, they will be very conservative on their own in terms of what their bid amount is, and may either overestimate the cost of time, material, or services, or they will include things that were ad alternates in our bid document, like a generator, for example, something that is not essential to our project. We put it in as an ad alternate to give us a price on it, in case council wanted to include it, they just included it in the pricing. And so we have to separate that out. So some things, hopefully, we would strive first, of course, not to lose anything, but my guess is that some of those ad alternates that we did not see as essential to the project, we could eliminate those before we would value engineer the project itself. Again, we're trying to drive this down about $1.1 million, so it's a significant amount, but not an overwhelming amount.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that item.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Eighty B is Director of Public Works regarding amending Chapter Eight of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 related to construction and demolition debris recycling. To comply with the 2016 California Green Building Standards Code, B1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Okay, Mr. Ochoa?
Every now and again, we have to update our codes for the green building code, and in this case, regarding construction demolition debris, the state has increased the required amount of diversion that we must achieve from 50 to, I believe, some 65%. So what we are asking tonight is for the council to introduce the ordinance that would amend our code so that the city's C and D ordinance is consistent with the green building code. If you have any question whatsoever, as it may pertain to construction or demolition debris, or any element of our integrated waste program, possibly any future directions of the environmental posture of the state of California juxtaposed to the federal government, potential technologies that may exist in other parts of the world, let alone this country, I'm sure that Mr. Dan Bell, the interim administrator of Integrated Waste, would be happy to tackle those questions for us.
All I want to know from Mr. Bell is, one of the Christmas trees going to be picked up? No, I'm kidding. Councilmember Sinanian?
I'll take you up on it, but I'll ask you, I'll go easy on you. So a lot of people are asking, why don't we recycle? Why doesn't the city of Glendale recycle or have a recycling facility? What's the answer? What's going on?
Well, we do recycle, and we encourage that, and the gray bins, you see it, they're houses.
Sure.
Or everyone's houses, so we do have a wonderful facility down on Chevy Chase that we do recycle here in Glendale, so we can take anything there. So for those folks, you can inform them, if they're not informed already, to use their gray bins to recycle. Did I answer your question fully?
Kind of does, but that's sort of the residents are recycling.
Yes.
Are we ourselves able to go through the trash that hasn't been conscientiously separated, and...
We could. Occasionally, some folks do mix, they do mix some of their dirty recycling.
Right.
Some folks feel that it is clean enough to recycle, but unfortunately, once it is contaminated, it goes in with the trash. But should we have to separate that? We can take that out to other yards, and they can separate that and through their methods clean it up, and it will be recycled.
But you're saying we could, do we?
We do, yes.
We do.
But in the case that it is contaminated, we can take that off-site, and they can do that maintenance there.
And what qualifies as a contamination?
It can be anything, let's take a pizza box, for example. You have there, you know, the greasy part, you know, you tend to usually dab that, but still, you see the cardboard, you think that's automatically recyclable, but it's not. You could take that apart, you could recycle that box, but the inside is actually contaminated.
So that's what I'm asking, when you say we could do that, if it's contaminated, we could recycle, I mean, do we or do we not?
We wouldn't do that because it doesn't become cost-effective to fish through the waste load, the waste stream, and try to pick up that little kernel there now. If we were to move towards what they call a dirty MRF, where, Material Recovery Facility, where everything comes in, everything gets sipped on the tipping floor, and then it's kind of like a grotesque Laverne and Shirley, where everything moves through these conveyor belts and machines go and pull out things that, and with a rate of efficiency that just exceeds whatever people could do. We don't have that particular capacity as yet, but that is something that we could look for in the future at the Integrated Waste Yard or beyond.
Okay.
And I can say, a wonderful setup there. I would love to have all of you come down to the yard, we can arrange a tour of what does go on at the recycling facility down there.
I'd love to come down.
Work with our partners at Allen and have you down there. Maybe incorporate into a Work Boot Tuesday, or just a loose schedule, yeah, but it'd be great for the public to be able to see that as well, and inform them, and I think, Mr...
So let me follow up with that, the answer that you gave. What's the industry standard, I guess that's sort of a broad definition, what is the cutting-edge, what's the modern approach to this? Is it to actually do that?
Modern approach in America isn't necessarily a modern approach internationally.
I think international is...
There are firms in the Far East, Japan has gotten very far ahead of the United States. Canada, in Edmonton, there is a plant now that they are making use of the concept of superheated plasma. Some folks would look at that and say, that's just incineration. In reality, however, the physics behind it is that you're able to heat material to such a degree, so many thousands of degrees, that you are effectively breaking it down at an elemental level, and you would take an amount of waste that is the size of, say, a 30-yard roll-off, and condensing it down to the size of a drum, a 50-gallon drum. So there's still a residual, and even some folks might tell you that there's a use for that residual, but at the very least, you're taking something that has that much volume, condensing it down, having it collapse in on itself, and all the while, generating energy. And so that has not yet gotten through EPA, and in California, considering California is relatively ahead of the curve, we would hope that we would get there first to match the aggressive waste diversion goals that the state has put out, but we still are not there. And I think ultimately, even the most cutting-edge professional in this field would tell you, you're going to have some residual, so having some landfill capacity is useful, but to the extent that you could take what you have now and extend it out into the future for decades and beyond is ideal because the carbon footprint of your waste operation is shrunken immensely because you're taking that much less away. And in the process, if you're able to create energy, create the heat, that could do any number of things, well, that is really where it seems to be this industry is going. We just need, as a country, to catch up.
And I would say, I know Councilman Najarian had mentioned about bringing back a little bit of information on recycling here in Glendale. And always being prepared, heading up, and I thank you for asking the question about recycling, I came prepared with a little PowerPoint. We'll go through briefly. So hopefully, the folks at home can see this, so where do they go, what do they do? This is the recycling center right here in Chevy Chase, things come through, so you see what happens there, and then as Mr. Ochoa was talking about, this shaker, it kind of goes through, inappropriate, so it goes through, kind of shakes it up and gets separated, kind of item by item there. So that is kind of what happens there, you see some of these items? They get bundled up, they get packaged, and then hauled off. I'm giving you a quick tutorial here, but here we go, you see that is multiple bulks there that have been suppressed down and bundled and ready to be taken out. We'll go through, so a couple examples, Mr. Najarian had asked about what is, what isn't recyclable, so you look at these things, anything you see with an X through it, a red X, would not be, so you see things like this, cardboard that is flattened, wonderful, recyclable, frozen food boxes, egg cartons, things of that nature you see there. As I mentioned before, the pizza box, because it is contaminated slightly with the grease and the cheese, although we like to eat it, it's not good for recycling. You look at these items here, cans, scrap metal, paper clips, which are always useful, you should reuse those. Here are some things, bottles, aerosol cans, of course, fire extinguishers. I think the fire department tells us oxygen tanks, none of those things should be recycled. Glass, these can be used, rinsed out and recycled, brought back, so these are valid items.
Do those get ground as glass and then re...
They do, as a matter of fact, well, similar, yeah, they get broken down by color at the recycling center there, and taken off as well. You've seen these around the facilities for syringes, things like that, so obviously, do not recycle those. You have little boxes that are showing up, most buildings have them now for medical items. Light bulbs, of course, should not be recycled, nor thrown in your trash. There's other ways to get rid of those, we can do that, and glass there. So just a couple examples, just want to provide that, should it come up, which it did, and be prepared, Mr. Najarian, we can get you full information on that, but again, want to, of course, open the invitation to have you down to the... But again, want to, of course, open the invitation to have you down to the recycling center and see everything we do down there.
And, seeing as you were talking about, the Environmental Management Center, that is one of the best services that we provide to all of our residents, and they pay for it now vis-à-vis their Integrated Waste Bill. The center that is operated by the fire department at, off of Flower Street, open twice a week, and you, it's our own household hazardous waste facility. And you put it in the back of your car, in the trunk, and our employees will take it off of your car and be able to dispose of it properly. And you pay for it already by way of your rates. It's great stuff. It's a great service.
Is the Integrated Waste Building, the Ginger Brenberg Building?
It is. It is.
And the recycle facility is immediately next door.
Yes, 548. Public Works is across the street, 541.
So while we're on this...
No, I'll save my remarks.
While we're on this subject, sometime last year, about five months ago, we allocated more money towards bulky item pickup because it seemed like almost, like we were being overwhelmed by the amount of old items that we had to pick up. Has that problem been ameliorated?
Yes.
I guess Councilmember Sinanian, we've made great strides, and we have been able to pick up more often and more loads and done more stop. We supplemented our own crews. We hired actually a new person to help with our existing crew, and we also contracted out $50,000 a year with a private service provider, and collectively, it's been, it's done, met the objective that we had in mind.
You're seeing it play out in the KPIs as well, the performance indicators. There's a lot of stuff out there, that's the one side of the story, but council said, go pick it up, and you allocated the money, so we did.
And it plays out in my number of emails as well, because I haven't gotten many of them lately.
Right, yeah. It's funny how that happens.
And in conjunction with that, we invested in a flash camera that we're installing at our trouble spots to catch the offenders, so that's been a deterrent as well.
Really? I mean, how many spots are we going to cover?
We only have one currently, so we are rotating it from spot to spot.
Are we disclosing where that is, or is it a surprise?
Maybe.
A secret?
Maybe.
Okay.
So just a few other items that I think are important. Batteries, household batteries have to go back to that household area, or any fire department, or the city clerk's office, or any municipal office, correct?
Absolutely, yes. Batteries and things of that nature, yes.
Paints, used paints have to go to that.
As a matter of fact, Regina Wheeler is here. We have a pickup day on the 29th of March, is that right?
I'm sorry?
Hazardous waste. We will have one up, and we'll, of course, get you flyers on the hazardous waste and things like that.
Oh, yes. So the fire department does, as you know, collection events, but we also have some places that we collect batteries in city facilities at every single floor, and they can also be dropped off at fire departments and at the libraries. So, I'm sorry, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Right, and those are all, like, they're there on Wednesdays and also on Saturdays.
Okay.
Through the, I don't remember the time.
And then, just shifting gears slightly, in our green waste barrels...
Yes.
You can't just throw a big old log in there, right? I mean, there's dimensions, small branches and leaves, and, but if a tree fell in this...
No palm fronds.
No palm...
Oh, yeah, there's weird rules like that, no palm fronds.
Because they get caught, they get caught in there, and the elasticity gets caught in there and tears up the machine, so they are oddities.
And if you don't have a full barrel, you shouldn't place it out, correct? You should only wait until your barrel is full. That way, our trucks will have less stops and will be more efficient.
Exactly.
Pickup.
Yes. And to finish up a point on Mayor Devine, speaking of Christmas trees, we are almost done. We passed the 7,000 tree mark today.
Wow.
That is since, we usually wait, of course, you know, the day after Christmas, on the 25th, and then also, it was a Friday this year, Armenian Christmas, on January 6th, we see all the trees coming out that week there, and we actually implemented some GYA kids that are helping our crews on bulky item and Christmas trees. So like I said, we traditionally annually have about 10,000 trees here in Glendale. We passed 7,000 today. We're getting about 500 to 700 a day picked up, so we're almost there.
I know, because I noticed that people are not...
Thank you for your emails.
And I'm noticing a certain greater level of courtesy on the roadways by our drivers ever since the mayor had a particular observation a month or so.
Very proud of the work they're doing down there, and always are thankful of the input that we get from the public.
Well, you know, it starts from the top, Dan.
And that's you guys. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Good job, Dan.
Don't question, Mr. Bell.
Don't go away, Mr. Bell. I have a quick question. Speaking of hazardous waste, is there, do you know if there is a plan in place for the batteries of electric vehicles in the future when they, when they are no longer usable? What is, how are we going to? Is there a plan that we know of?
I know Mr. Zern has looked at that, because that's something they're planning for the total life cycle of EVs, but I couldn't tell you tonight.
Okay.
You won.
Yeah.
You're at the bonus round.
No, we won. It's a teamwork.
It's teamwork.
It's teamwork.
We're talking garbage.
Okay, so...
Well, I want to make a motion out of here.
Yeah. One more question.
One last, okay. Do we have a...
Just a reminder that the item before you is...
Madam Mayor. I have one more question out of here.
Okay, go ahead.
As far as the state-of-the-art systems that it's in Canada and Europe are using, do we know what, I mean, I know the answer, but why is it that we cannot use it in California? Is it because of the regulations, or...
US EPA in California.
Yeah, and also, the Air Resources Board, they have this new regulation coming up that they already proposed from 2020 to 2030. I think there is another 55% additional emission reduction that is being proposed. So none of the systems are going to work with these regulations.
There's trade-offs everywhere, that's the issue, yeah.
I know this sort of went on probably way beyond...
Okay, Dan.
How much time are we expecting to go on? But, so, back to the recycling issue. So the recycling, the brown bins, the gray bins...
Gray bins.
Are available for residential...
Yes.
I'm sorry, for single-family homes?
Yes.
But are they...
Also commercial.
Available for apartments, for apartment units?
Yes.
Is there some kind of enforcement mechanism? Because I think a lot of criticism that I hear is, oh, the apartments don't recycle, or the apartment residents don't recycle. Is that the pattern?
A lot of times, what ends up dictating, the placement, the number, and the practice, quite frankly, is the space that is allowed in an apartment complex. And those managers do have a great deal of latitude, and some of them, they will be very conscientious, other ones won't.
Yeah, there are apartment buildings that don't have the...
Or if they do, they're buried away somewhere in the back.
Exactly.
Right? And a lot of it comes down to the congestion on the street, the ability to place things. Having gone out with our drivers, that's an interesting dynamic. Do a ride-along with our Integrated Waste drivers, and it is interesting to say the least, as to how they stage the bins, how they collect the bins, how they negotiate the roadways. And a lot of that is, there's a symbiosis between the, especially our multifamily managers and residents and the Integrated Waste Department. So it is a little bit catch-as-catch-can.
So considering the fact that 60, was it 60% of our residents live in apartments? Is that right?
I believe that's, I think it's more...
It's more, so it's actually more...
And it concentrated in certain parts of town.
Yeah, so considering that being a fact, so they must produce a commensurate amount of waste, can we use creative means to make sure that the apartment owners don't get away with not placing those gray bins? Or, I mean, is there some kind of an enforcement mechanism? But not like in a draconian way, but working with them?
We do a lot of education now. We absolutely do with folks that want to be educated, that will make the time and do the work with the residents. The way to make it most practical and most effective is to simply go to a mixed-waste stream and take it to a dirty MRF and just let the machines sort it out.
So take the onus off of them and...
And just charge you the price. And I think if you got to most folks, depending on what the marginal cost increase would be, they would say, fine, if I don't have to deal with it anymore, and you make it simple. Heretofore, we haven't been there, though. We haven't been at that, having that discussion.
Is that what the Japanese do? Do they, does the government take upon itself the responsibility of recycling it, or...
My understanding is that it is generally mixed-waste stream, because you're ultimately heating all these materials. Recycling is an interesting thing. This is about commercial or construction demolition debris. And there's often an aftermarket, I'm working for you. I'm segueing a little bit, yeah. There's an aftermarket for the metals that you'll see, for the fill, but a lot of times, when Dan was showing you images of the bales of recycling material, those are commodities. And if there's no market for those commodities, they sit in ship's holds, they sit in yards, they sit in storage containers, and until and unless governments like ours, legislatures like ours make it more expensive to use virgin materials than recycled materials, post, consumer content, then you're going to continue to see that dynamic. And so maybe, if we're not willing to go that route, then maybe there's a policy discussion that needs to happen here in this council chambers, at the legislature in Washington, DC, that says, okay, you know, we know that we're going to go that route, then we have to move towards these other technologies and kind of reverse-engineer this discussion. Because this is where we are today. After California, again, leading the nation, and if we're the tip of the spear, it's a pretty dull tip.
If I may, to Mr. Ochoa, all the stuff that Mr. Ochoa mentioned, we do have commercial recycling programs...
Coming up.
That's enforceable. It's actually legislation, and we have started it. As of January of last year, January or April, legislation says that any commercial facility that produces more than four yards will have to perform organics recycling as well. And next year, it will go up to eight yards. So all of these are legislated, and we are enforcing it. As far as the multifamily...
What's that mean, four yards, eight yards?
Four yards of waste.
Ah. And organics?
Cubic yards.
Organics will have to be...
Food waste?
Food waste.
Yeah, that's right.
So it is cubic yards?
Right. So as far as the multifamily of apartment buildings are concerned, we have received a grant. We have done extensive outreach with residents of the apartments and the landlords, and that's in the place.
Yeah, that may have to be a continuous process.
Exactly, that will.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, I have to throw in a comment on construction waste, because that's the issue before us. But I like the discussion. Mr. Bell, would you please come back and let us know what the metrics are for current diversion, diversion rates of...
Regular recycling.
Regular recycling, and you could include the multifamily and the homes. And then give us a target that we can realistically meet in the next year, and give us some... Am I giving him too much, Mr. Ochoa? Can he handle all this?
You're fine. We'll have that in the next few months as we move towards a franchise system.
Yeah.
And give us goals, and perhaps some ideas to reach as we, I mean, everyone's talking about the same thing, about recycling, diverting. We want to put as little up in Shoal Canyon as we can and make, you know, be as good a municipal citizen as we are.
Absolutely.
And I think we're all interested in that, even Mr. Garp, and we're... Bring it back, it's something good. I think it's very interesting. And there was a lady, I don't know if you recall, a few months, several months ago, who said in one month, all she fills up is a, I think it was like a five-gallon bucket or a 10-gallon bucket. She diverts the rest of it in different manners. So I think that's very interesting, and at least if it's, the information is out there. I think we can all teach the children, teach the adults, and be, as we said, be better municipal citizens.
Yes, and you'll see more information, just to kind of wrap this up for all of you and Mr. Garcia to keep on task, but we will come back with those items. And Regina Wheeler and her team on the outreach side of Integrated Waste will come back and talk specifically about bags, in-apartment bag program, where the tenants will be given a bag, you can put it one by one in there, and then on your trash day, the night before, you put it in the recycling bin. And it encourages them to collect them, take it out to their bin, roll it out to the sidewalk, and we pick it up in the morning. So things like that are in the works, but I think we kind of got off Section 8 of the municipal code.
Excellent. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. And do we have a motion for...
Just need an introduction of the ordinance.
Oh, is that what it is? Oh, okay. Introduced.
The ordinance is introduced.
Yeah, the ordinance is introduced. Next item.
Madam Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Oral Communications. This is a five-man portion, where discussions limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation report.
I have one card, Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. On December 6, 2016, at council, when replacing former Councilwoman Laura Freeman, position on the Airport Commission, Councilman Zahar Sinian nominated Councilman Vartai Gepetian to the Chair of Airport Commission, and Mayor Devine seconded the nomination. Councilman Najarian was disappointed that none of his colleagues would nominate him. So Mr. Najarian had the audacity to nominate himself, and his colleagues stayed firm, not seconding his nomination. Councilman Najarian took the same righteous action that former Councilwoman Laura Freeman took last year when she wanted to be nominated by her colleague to become the new mayor. Last December, when Mayor Devine called for counting the votes on term limits, Councilman Najarian stated, quote, "My comments expletive at this time." What did Mr. Najarian mean by "expletive"? Expletive as defined by the Webster Dictionary as swear words, obscenity, profanity, and four-letter words. Was Mr. Najarian telling his colleagues "expletive" because he felt humiliated when his council colleague turned him down when he wanted to be appointed to the Chair of Airport Commission? With nearly 12 years on council, it appears Mr. Najarian has lost his humility when his actions are like former Councilman Dave Weaver. Mr. Weaver had 18 years on council and bullied his critics and told them to move from Glendale if they did not like the way he was running the show. Has Councilman Arun Najarian become the new Armenian Weaver? On December 2016, city staff brought back to council the South Glendale Community Plan, in which zoning was being discussed. Council spoke about more, better public transportation, as well as affordable housing with mixed-use rentals for both low-income and young adults and families. Excuse me. The highlight of the evening was the hypocrisy coming from the very senior Councilman Najarian, who had voted on the Downtown Pacific Plan, that's the DSP, back in 2006. The DSP zone was Glen Oaks Boulevard on the north, Calorale Boulevard on the south, Brand Boulevard on the east, and Central on the west. In 2013 candidate forum, after the damages of overdevelopment was done in our downtown, Councilman Najarian stated he was going to put the brakes on any new development. At the December 16 meeting, Councilman Najarian felt on his sword and then blamed himself for his poor judgment of the past. Now, he does not want South Glendale to look like our downtown. It was laughable when he stated, quote, "We cannot let South Glendale look like Central Glendale." Poor judgment was used when Councilman Najarian put the taxpayers of Glendale at risk when he approved the Holland Partners properties at the corner of Wilson and Orange. The mega apartment complex stands right along the sidewalk, and directly above there are dangerous, dangerous hanging balconies along the public right-of-way. Councilman Najarian oftentimes violates the boundaries set by the DSP for which... the boundaries set by the DSP for which he had voted back in 2006. The following properties are outside of the DSP: the Camden Apartments near the Memorial Hospital, the new mega apartment complex at the former Office Depot site, and the new large medical office complex on West Colorado near the entrance of the Number Five freeway. And of course, the Aloft Hotel, which Councilman Najarian has the audacity to call an extension of downtown, located north of Glen Oaks Boulevard at the corner of Brand and Dryden. Councilman Najarian approved the hotel, but turned down a requested EIR by the community. He also turned down a request by the community to downzone the area. Mr. Najarian has a history of accommodating millionaire developers in order for them to save millions. The LV apartment formerly known as Broadway Lofts and LaMelle Theaters Lofts are able to use the taxpayers' Maryland Street parking structure at a discount. Councilman Najarian is running for city council in 2017. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Well, Mr. Mohill's running for school board, and I don't think you're going to get any votes for school board--
School board, city council.
Mr. Mohill. And when I was a little kid, and the bullies would call me names, my mom would pull me aside and say, "Don't worry, Ara. It's the empty cans that rattle the loudest. And you, sir, you, sir, are an empty can."
Next item.
There's no new business. Simply a motion to adjourn in memory of Mr. Peebles.
A move that we adjourn in memory of Byron Peebles.
Second.
We are adjourned. 7:20.